Can you try to? Oh, wait, wait, wait. Yeah. Let me. All right, let me find you. I'm going to make you the host now, okay? Anything because I was thinking. Did you know that Maisie was going to be famous? I don't, and you don't see.
There we go. Is that better? I do not. Nope.
No, I don't see.
Yes.
Calling the meeting to a close.
Thank you. I would like to move action item 11.2. Under item. And then also. Moving numbers. Five. To number seven. Public comment after the presentation. Presentation. Moving number six. Number five. And moving number seven. So number five, we come here to represent this comment. Presentation of the draft reopening.
That's what I want.
Public comment.
Abby.
And on this action item 11.2, we move up to the next.
They can't hear. They've got to take their masks off when they're talking.
And the final adjustment is 11.4.
Can you turn it up?
This is action item. And that is the 2021. Page detail.
The next item on the agenda is the election of the chair. The chair, do we have one? Nominate Ryan DeLuio. Is he a second? Is there another nomination? All those who voted for him and chair for next year. Unanimous with those who are here. Follow the vote. Then. Next is nomination for vice chair. I got the mic. Yeah. All those in favor of. Before we get started.
Ginny, the Zoom room is having a really hard time hearing.
That's better if I talk into the top.
There we go.
If I can. Okay. I would just like to thank all the people, particularly this summer, the committee, that put together this plan. We're all working kind of in something we have in our head. But I think one of the things about our school is.
They wanted to include the chair by chair, or they didn't care.
We've had to change in terms of testing. We've had to change in terms of administration. And I think that I would really like to thank all the teaching staff for all the effort they put into the biggest change I think they ever seen in working with kids this spring. I know they work hard all the time. It's not easy being a teacher, but I think that it really was a great effort on their part, and I certainly appreciate it. So, thank you.
All right, bear with me here, this is all brand new, obviously. So we have got, the next thing is the approval of the minutes for July 16th. There's a, you got a second? Okay, any comments, changes to the minutes in July? All in favor of the minutes to the July board meeting? All opposed? So I guess unanimous? And let's see. Chris, you're next, correct? All right, superintendent comment.
I would like to just say that we're going to hold most of our comments tonight because of the presentation. But I do want to thank all the support for our budget and the support for our staff. We've seen over the last few weeks, it's been a real challenge. And I want to make sure that I publicly state my thanks to the staff and to the administration here at, I say, I say again, RSU 78 at Ranji Lake, for the work that you've put in over the summer. As we presented the plan tonight, the model worker went in and that we want what's best for it.
Okay, principal comments? Student rep, we don't have, okay. I'd like a quick comment just as chair, since I just got voted into this. I'm not going to pretend to have all the answers and all the administrative issues about this job, I'll be heavily on Chris and Georgia for things that I don't quite get, but the one thing I will try to do is the board, the administration, the staff. I would facilitate any way I can to make us a common team working for, a team working towards a common goal. If we can make the sum greater than parts, it's the best thing for the entire school. So that'll be my goal the entire time. Anybody can reach out to me at any time if you have any concerns or questions or anything like that anywhere along. Okay. Presentation of the draft reopening.
Just a quick introduction, as we move forward on our ever-changing day-to-day activities, school openings have become the utmost and most important concern for students, families, staff, community members. We need to work together to ensure the safety of our students, our staff, and our community members through what we're going through in these challenging times. Understanding the many concerns, caring for each other, and protecting our most precious gift, that being our children, we will be presenting a draft plan and looking for comments, input, questions, and hopefully we provide many answers tonight. And up to my left is where we'll start, I'll give people a chance to send it around. And I just asked you to bear with me, I have to keep changing glasses. I have those for full and then those for distance, so. You can't see, like. I do drive home, so be careful when we leave. Before starting the presentation, just so you know, we're going to present a PowerPoint presentation that's been put together by our committee of many, followed up by some frequently asked questions that may answer questions that have both come in and have been asked of various members of the school system. The board will have their opportunity, obviously, after the presentation, to ask questions and comments and concerns. And then we invite the public to please participate under the public participation section. And with that, I'll start with the first slide. What we're presenting here is what really made a lot of our decision-making for the plan that we presented. First of all, there were recommendations and then subsequently requirements provided by the main department of education. Along with that came requirements and recommendations from the main central disease control. And I emphasize the word "main" in both quotes because we are making decisions based upon "me," not the nation, which is very important, especially when we come to our local considerations and the input from our parent, staff, and community. So with that, from the main DOE, we received what was called the Framework for Reopening Schools. This is a very long document, broken up into five different subsections, which our committee addressed. And from the main CDC, who's giving the information, both directed to the public as well as to the DOE, we started looking at these concepts because we wanted to get our kids back to school. We did not enjoy, when I say "we," we as educators, I know you as parents and community members. We want our kids in school, we do not want them not to be there. So in June, and continuing through even now, and both meeting today, and will be meeting next week, and probably continuing into the month of August, we established a steering committee to look at various items. And we were challenged to develop three plans that eventually became known really as the red, yellow, slash, hybrid, green. And this, the main CDC, on July 31st, put out their color coding, which I really need to make sure that we explain it so that you understand where we're coming from during this planning process. Red meant a high-risk level. And for education, that meant that it would go 100% virtual, remote, or at-home learning. If a county was recognized as yellow, that would have been a more, less risk level, or moderate risk levels, some places use, which is more of your hybrid in-school as well as virtual learning. And then came what was known as the green or the low-risk level. And that was that in-school learning could develop. But, and here's the key, is that the main department of education established safety requirements. And so on July 17th, we received those requirements, which then were revised when July 31st came out. And we ended up with the following requirements. First was face covers. And if you go to the main DOE, they have the in-depth version, which takes up nearly a whole page, so we're just trying to highlight. And that the face cover says, "Mask must be worn by all students, staff, and other individuals entering Ranji Lake Regional School for any reason. With safe mask breaks for students scheduled incident school day, face masks should be made of multiple layers of cloth and follow CDC guidelines." Also, shields are acceptable, but as the exact terminology is. When it comes to shields, face shields may be an alternative for those students with medical, behavioral, or other challenges who are unable to wear masks/face covers. The same applies to staff with medical or other health reasons for being unable to wear face covers. Face shields worn in place of face covering must extend below the chin and back to the ears. Since that came out, even yesterday and today, there have been changes recommended by the CDC when it comes to shields, which our committee will have to now stop looking. And that includes that if a staff member is wearing a shield and comes less than six feet, they must also be masked. So, the reason I'm bringing that up, and I'm not laboring this, this point, is that things change on a day-to-day basis for us. And we're trying to stay with those changes. And it's, it becomes a difficult task at times. But we've always said from the beginning of our committee, we've got to protect our kids and our staff. And eventually, they will be out of our community. So changes are happening even as we speak. And yesterday, the CDC came out with a 17-page revision, and on it, they no longer have the term "mask breaks." So now we're wondering what that means. So now we've got to follow up on that. So, again, if we can't give you a direct answer tonight, I'm going off the slide a little bit. Please bear with us, we'll try to find the answer because we, we question it as much as some of the questions that you may have tonight. Another was the social distancing. Again, when it first came out, six feet distance in classroom and common areas, no more than 50 individuals gathered in one large gathering space, and staggered passing between classes to minimize student, excuse me, to minimize student in contact in hallways. Well, that then changed. And now the main CDC and DOE has stated in their most recent, I guess you could say, July 31st, and it is subsequently being revised, "As adults must maintain six feet of distance from others to the extent possible. Maintaining three feet of distance is acceptable between and among students when combined with other measures outlined in the list of safety requirements. Six feet of physical distancing is required for students while eating breakfast and lunch, as students will be unable to wear masks at that time. A medical isolation room separate from the nurse's office must be designated for students/staff who exhibit COVID-19 symptoms during the school day. Adequate ventilation is required for classrooms, with schools having flexibility in implementation such as using properly working ventilation systems or outdoor air exchange using fans and open windows or doors. Groups in any one area, room, or classroom must not exceed the governor's gathering size limits." So, we received that requirement as well. Then there was hygiene training, resources, protective equipment for staff and students. And hygiene is that all students and staff in the school must receive training in proper hand hygiene. All students and staff must wash hands or use sanitizing gel upon entering the school before and after eating, before and after dawning or removing a face mask after using the restroom, before and after use of playgrounds and shared equipment, and upon entering and exiting a school bus. And one thing I did forget to mention on the mask is that students must wear masks or shields, the entirety, when they're on the school bus, both entering and exiting, as well as sanitation. And under the PPE, additional safety precautions are required for school nurses and/or any staff supporting students in close proximity when distance is not possible or when students require physical assistance. These precautions must at a minimum include eye protection, for example, face shield or goggles, and a mask/face covering. Classroom and/or areas that have been used by an individual diagnosed with COVID-19 must be closed off until thorough cleaning and sanitation takes place. Then we also had the home symptom screening. And that. That is the one I can't put my hand on, but that is where. Parents will be asked to follow a list of screening questions, as well as checking temperatures and before getting on the bus, as well as coming to school. And that's another requirement that is of schools. And then the final is school plan for symptoms, suspected COVID case response. And that one would be such that if there is a reported case or this, that the school nurse would then decontact them with CDC, and the CDC would set the procedures and protocol for. And that involves a whole list of protocols. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dooley.
Okay, so I'm going to speak a little bit to the, our safety plan, what we've put in place. One thing that's required is a good working ventilation system, it has to be up to code. As a result of our building project, our ventilation system is all up to code and running very well. Staggered entrance and exit plans. So from the moment we started building our plan, we started from the entrance in the morning. So what does that actually look like for us? Kids have to be staggered in the building. We can't just have everybody coming into the building all at once. So we have five entrance points in the morning, all students will be dropped off in the loop. And there will be an adult at every entry point to make sure that kids are staggering in, so that we're not having kids all at once. They'll go straight to classrooms, and then from there, they will be allowed to go up to their cubbies once in a ti- once at a time, or their lockers, to put their materials away or their jackets. Our exit plan has changed. There's, that's actually a little bit more tricky than, than our entrance plan. So, moving forward, our exit plan, we will release our bus students first in the parking lot. So they'll be released out the front door, there will be no more lobby pickups. You'll have to schedule picking up your child if it's out, if it's anytime after, before 2:00. So no lobby pickups. After that, it will be drivers and their siblings. We have a number of kids that, older kids that drive, and drivers going to their siblings to school, so they'll be released. And then we will release, we'll release the remaining students, they'll walk out the back doors with their teachers, they'll line up, and as parents come to pick them up, they'll be, they'll be six feet apart, they'll have to, you know, go from the line to get in the vehicles. So, the dismissal time is going to be a little earlier because we anticipate that this is going to take a little while to do. So, we will make adjustments, you know, we're going to have to sort of see how it plays out, we'll make adjustments to the plan. Mr. Downing spoke a little bit about the screening process and hand sanitizing. That, that, that's going to be a learning process for kids. Kids will be asked to sanitize, sanitize as they enter the building, and then as they enter every classroom. There are hand sanitizers outside of each of the classrooms. A minimum of six-feet distancing is maintained at all times. Hall and stairway signage, this is also a requirement, um, that we have to have signage throughout our building. Our floors will have to be marked. We're going to try to do it as fun as possible, like with lily pads or something that kids can really relate to, but we will have everything distanced off our fountains. Everything will have to be six-foot distance. We'll have markers everywhere. Hall and stairway signage to help control distancing and encourage good hygiene practices. Mandatory face coverings, limited sharing of classroom materials. This is really tricky, because, um, in every classroom, kids will have to have their own classroom materials, and in art and music, those materials will have to be sanitized in between classes. So, that's a really, you know, class times for those art, for those specials might be reduced because of that. Plexiglas dividers, we'll have some of those in the library, like on the tables, so that, um, if there was an intervention happening with a, with a, you know, one-on-one intervention, that there's a plexiglass shield in between the teacher and the student. The teacher would be wearing her shield at that point in time, and because there's two barriers, wouldn't need to wear her mask. So, we're, we're going to try to, um, you know, give kids, give our children as much affect as we can, because we know that's important for our kids. And then we do have a plan in place for increased cleaning protocols. We have ordered some sprayers, um, and I'm, yeah, I keep going to talk about that a little bit later. We just finished the whole day classroom. And we'll be spraying buses down in between deliveries, and, um, classrooms will have to be wiped down for any classes that, um, are moving. You know, if there's an exchange of students, classes will have to be cleaned in between.
Just squat down.
Buses and transportation, at this time, we're encouraging all parents to transport their child or children whenever possible. Bus seating will be limited. We're going to put one student per seat, and load the buses from back to front, and stagger the seating. So, first student will be back window, next student will be in the aisle, in the next seat, and so on, all the way to the front. We'll leave the seat behind the driver empty. Face coverings will be, uh, must be worn at all times while on the bus, and hand sanitizer will be available, um, when they first get on the bus. We will sanitize, uh, buses after every AM.
So Georgia already spoke briefly about the morning arrival and dismissal. And honestly, you know, I spent some time in the parking lot. This is probably one spot in the plan which will require the most patience and understanding, because it takes time, and we want to do this as safely as possible. So in the morning, the big change in the top is all student drop-offs will occur in the bus loop. Last year, when we had allowed some parents that would come in and park and drop their kids off, and they'd walk in, that will not happen now. The only people coming into the parking lot are students, drivers, and siblings, and staff, and teachers. And that's basically, we have to do this just with our entry points, so you can get kids to the right spot, they can check in with adults when they come into the building. Face coverings must be in place before exiting the personal transportation. Students will have designated entry and exit points, like Georgia said, we'll have five of those, and they're just close to the way that the students will be in. Temperature checks for all students and staff upon entering the building. And this is new, arrival time is going to be seven forty-five. There's no morning recess, and students cannot be dropped off before seven forty-five. We have to really narrow that drop-off time to allow us to have staff in the right spots and to get kids in the building, because before, when you're all over the place, it just won't be as organized for us to start. So Georgia said there will be no lobby pickups. So if a student needs to be dismissed early for a scheduled appointment, the front office must be notified in advance, and students must be picked up before two PM, one PM on Tuesdays. After two PM, buses will be in the parking lot, you know, not be able to drive through, mask must be worn. The big, the, the morning was easy, planning the end of the day was a beast, and we need to keep the traffic moving well in the parking lot, and lobby pickups are going to add another level to that, so that's why we decided not to do those. Buses will load first and depart from the parking lot, and then the student drivers will go out with siblings, they'll depart second, and then we're going to have, like Georgia said, the students will go out, parents will come into the bus loop, and we'll dismiss them to the parents. And I'd say of all our parts of the plan that will need the most understanding will be our dismissal. You know, we'll have to work together, we may do it, and say, okay, we have to modify this after the first day. There's going to be a lot of moving parts. I am going to be, I used to greet people at the door, now I'm going to be kind of right at the bus loop, you know, so if I have to hold traffic back to keep it safe, because if you're out there, not all parents understand this, but when the vehicles are moving and people are walking, it just gets dangerous, so we really have to control that flow at the end of the day. School meals and nutrition, okay, so breakfast will be served, and the breakfast and lunch will be served in the classrooms. We've ordered some equipment, so we can get the food from the cafeteria down to each classroom and deliver it. Students please eat there, or come pick up, and bring the stuff back up to the kitchen. And some of this stuff you're seeing now is going to come later in the presentation. Of remote choice and hybrid Monday through Thursday. If you're, if you are not in school, if you're remote that day, meals must be ordered in advance and picked up from the school by appointment. And Fridays, and if we go remote red, meals will be delivered to drop off, and pickup points much like we did last year.
So, this is where it is constantly changing, so I will do my best to explain it, but like Chris had said, that there are so many things that are just fluid about this, that some stuff that was in there I had to change today, because even since Monday, it was completely different. So, as we talked about, the preschool training tool must be used prior to attending school. So, this will be, uh, you can click on it if you want to, just so that they can see what it looks like. These are just questions that we would ask that every staff member and every family just kind of look at before they send their child to school. As they phrased it, that usually we have a pretty high threshold for how, what we make our kids go to school with, and this year, we're going to need a little bit lower of a threshold for our parents sending in those kids with, you know, a runny nose or a cough or something that you know may not be specifically attributed to something else. So, um, you know, and ask about a fever, if you are sick with any of the most common symptoms, and the most common symptoms are listed on the right-hand side, and then less common symptoms, and these are changing as they learn more, especially with children. The other one would be, do you feel sick with any of, oh, wait, I did that one, sorry. Have you been in close contact with a person who has COVID-19, and have you traveled outside of his state in the past fourteen days? So, if a family or staff member says yes to any of these, it's an automatic stay home, and to contact me at the school. If you, so it's on mic if you stay, say yes, or you have two or more of the less common symptoms, we would want you to stay home until you, uh, spoke with me. And then if all the answers are no, obviously we'd want you to come as normal. We were required to have an isolation room, separate from my current office, which, again, presents a little bit of the interesting factor, but, um, we did find a space that will work, and so any students that have, or staff that have symptoms that we're not really sure exactly what it is, then they would be isolated there until a family member comes to pick them up. The health office staff, or anybody who's working to help me, will follow. The main DOE has released a child appears or feels unwell photo chart, which has also changed a couple times, but it just gives you like what you should do. Do they have this, then do this. If it's this, then do that. So it makes it a little bit easier for us, uncharted territory, until we kind of just figure it out. And then, it's currently under revision, but there is guidance coming from the main, Academy of Pediatrics, and that will kind of let us know, depending on what a child or staff member is sent home with, when can they return, depending on what symptoms they have, if they need to check with the doctor first and get clearance to come back, there's a whole thing. So, but like I said, there, that's under revision right now, and hasn't fully been released to us, so a lot of moving parts on this.
Okay, so as far as special education goes, um, that, there's more information coming, a lot more information coming, is my understanding. But for now, individual education plan teams will serve as they always have. They'll make plans on a case-by-case basis in accordance with the forthcoming Maine Department of Education and CDC guidelines. Pre-K. So, in anticipation of, um, soon, you know, needing more classroom space and additional staffing, we are not going to start the year with a pre-K program. That's not to say that we're not going to have pre-K this year. We're just not going to start off at the beginning of the year with this. As, um, Mr. Downing is going to speak to in a little while, we're kind of really looking more at a slower phase in process, so, um, that sort of speaks, um, to that. So, more classroom space, more additional staff. This will give us additional staff to help, um, with, uh, help support classrooms and help maybe potentially with some remote learning that's going to happen. And, and these teachers will also help to fill in if there's that, you know, any, um, family medical need that has to happen, uh, which we anticipate that, that happen, we'll have additional staff available. I just want everyone to know that this does not follow our philosophy. We, you know, we want a pre-K program, we're committed to a pre-K program, um, but at this point in time, we really felt that, um, play-based learning was going to be really hard to, to do with all the restrictions that we have in place right now, um, and the CDC requirements. One thing that we are going to do though, is we will offer, um, our, we'll still partner with area programs and offer supplemental materials to help support, um, those pre-K parents at home, those pre-K kids at home, and pre-K, um, pre-Ks in the build, in the town. So I guess there's not really much more to say about that, but we will revisit it, um, early winter, and, um, see if we can get those kids back in there.
So as we started planning, one of the directors in the framework for reopening schools was the school administrative units to develop three plans. One would, would be the red, which is the all remote, yellow, which is the hybrid, and green, which would be in-person. So, what we did was we looked at all the models, and we tried to come up with some consistent themes, and so we looked at that, and when we started looking at it, the first thing we said was, parents will have the option to do remote learning, whether it's green or yellow. Obviously, red would be all remote. So, we need a day for our staff to not only work with those kids, but for those kids to have an opportunity, and excuse me for calling these kids, I've done it for years, to have the opportunity, if they're having, um, some questions or need some assistance, that they would have a day in which we could sort of dedicate to the remote aspect of our learning programs. The other thing we were actually discussing today is looking at having a sort of, uh, remote helpers, where we would actually have folks that would have a hotline that they could call, I can use a better term, that they could call into, and if there's a question, they can get an answer right then and there, or if they need to go to a teacher, that helper could then, you know, go see the teacher, and so there's a lot of planning that we're looking at, but I wanted to let you know that, you know, remote is, is actually number five down there. I skipped to it. So I'll, I'll read that in a second. Number two, one of the things between all three models is we want to be able to transition between the models at any time. And one of the concerns we have as educators was phasing in, because we haven't seen our kids for a while, and they haven't seen us, and we don't know where they are at certain levels, so, plus we have some, you know, the concerns that the DOE is putting forth, and so we wanted to make sure that we could go from green to yellow, or yellow to green, and, uh, we're hoping that we do not have to even go to red, but so that we could have a transition, so we looked at that. We also, uh, know that Franklin County has been designated as the green. It may still be necessary for some grade spans to operate under a yellow model due to enrollment numbers and space, so that's another part that we're looking at. Continually Tuesday at one-thirty dismissal, professional development and other needs need to be done. And then the last one, as I said, families will have a choice to elect a hundred percent remote learning under the yellow and green plans. Middle school and high school students will be expected to attend in real time with the in-building class schedule. More information will follow for families who elect this option. It will look different from the March to June remote learning. Simple fact that we've been planning and working on this, and we weren't thrown into it like we were in March. So if we looked at the green in-person model, and we'll have these slides, so if we need to go back with questions, you know, we will go back on them. In-person learning will be operating with the DOE safety measures previously outlined. Monday through Thursday, excuse me, Monday through Friday, regular bell schedule in the school building with Tuesday early release. Fridays are remote for all students, and the information will be forthcoming for families opting for remote schooling during the green level. Attendance is mandatory, and work will be scored, and grades will be given as usual. And a point that needs to be brought up, so that I, I don't miss that, if a family chooses to go a hundred percent remote, uh, we're looking for a date of August twenty-six for that information, so that we can plan accordingly for the in-school aspect, and also, that would be for the, we're going to do it by quarters, so that if you choose remote, you would be looking at for the first quarter, usually somewhere near the end of October, first November, and that would be part of the plan. We then would look, we developed what's called the yellow, or is more commonly referred to around the state, uh, as the hybrid model, and what that is, is that students in the Laker group would be in-person on Monday and Tuesday, remote on Wednesday and Thursday, which is called Remote A, and then Friday, all students are remote. The pride is just the opposite of Laker. Monday and Tuesday would be the remote, where Wednesday and Thursday would be in-person, and then Friday would be the Remote B, and then choice is the hundred percent choice, which would remain remote, and obviously on B, um, that would be as all students are. We also have to consider foster tech students, and that is changing, um, even as we speak with when they're going to offer programs. Even as we speak with when they're going to offer programs, are they going to offer programs? We have a lot of students that have signed up for foster tech. And that would uh they would be remote on the Ranger Lakes Region School School Day. And uh daily attendance would be taken. And then hopefully this one will never occur um because we know what it was like March through June. And that would be the red model. We had to develop that. And that would be all learning will happen remotely. Each grade, grade span have to be on its own daily schedule. And then attendance will be taken. Elementary would be during attendance would be at 8:30 and middle and high school would be for each class period. We're now at a point where there was some frequently asked questions and I'll turn that over to Georgia and Seth. And then after that would be the the board opportunity to ask questions. But I do want to draw everybody's attention to the very last page. And that is that it will be a special school board meeting to vote on the plan that's developed over the next few days. But remember, this is a draft. We bring in this as a draft, not as a asking for a vote or having it be the only one that we're going to look at. Um and please continue to send in your comments and questions to that email address because we really, we truly, really, no good term you want to use, we want to hear.
All right, so um these are some questions that have uh come to uh myself and um and to Seth um over the past few weeks. So we thought we would just sort of get these out and maybe might answer some of your questions that you have. Um why can't exceptions be made for rural areas in case numbers are low? Uh the answer to that is we have to follow the main department of education right now and CDC requirements. Um and you know, how they have classified like we have to follow that.
Um can we utilize other spaces on campus and hire new staff to get more kids in the building? Um we have looked at every possible space in this building and how to use it. Um staffing is a big issue, you know, when you start breaking up classes to try to get smaller groups and rooms, suddenly you need more teachers and then you're dealing with the budget. And I promise you, we have looked at every scenario. We had a group of 14 people working on this for the entire summer. Um and it's just, that's a tough one, you know, when we do this, what happens is you get a great idea in a room and then 14 people tell you all the things that why it might work. Um so we looked at all of our spaces. We feel they're all being used the best we can and the staff are being utilized where they need to be.
So can we use off-campus spaces? That is not uh an area that we're going to go to because it creates a great deal of liability. It creates safety issues for our students. And um staffing issue. We don't have a lot of additional staff. Um we don't have money in our budget right now to hire additional staff. Um and we don't have anybody really applying. Nobody really wants to work in schools right now. So that's an issue for us. Um
Um why must we use six feet versus three feet even though the framework outlines a possibility of three feet? And George, I think somebody mentioned it earlier. So the six feet, we, when we do six feet, we'll be able to have mass breaks in the classroom and we'll be able to eat in the classrooms. We have to eat in the classrooms. If we go to three feet, there'll be no mass breaks. I don't know where the kids would eat because if we had three feet spacing doubled the occupancy in a room, what are you going to do with half the room when you have to eat? Um so we chose to go at six feet because um for eating, for mass breaks and Lindsay can correct on this, but when you do contact tracing, it would be less people. If we had a case, it'd be less people that have to be quarantined.
They have said to us that how it works is that if all the measures are put into place, so everybody's wearing a mask, everybody is doing the full six feet of distancing, you're doing the hand sanitizing, you've kept your groups in cohorts, you have your isolation rooms. If all of your measures are in place, it's far less people that would have to be isolated or quarantined if they were to get a case. Um if we are putting kids in the classrooms um at three feet apart but and they're wearing their masks, there's just a higher chance that if there were to be something that happens in there, everybody is going to have to be isolated. And then you would be looking, or quarantined, excuse me. Um and then you're also looking at potentially another classroom that's near them. Um so the whole point is to try to stay at six feet. I know it's very, very confusing. It's very confusing for us. That's the best clarification I can give you on it at this time. Um yeah, it's difficult, but we just just felt strongly that we were going to go with the six feet. That way there's even less issues because what we don't want to happen is for us to do the three feet and then something happened, the CDC tell us that at this point, you know, depending on what it is that you guys have to go remote for however long. So with that recommendation, we chose to say six feet. So um the other thing is, is that those kids who have to wear or have to wear a face shield, um they have to maintain six feet distancing. So if we, you know, want to single out a child in a classroom that can't wear a face mask and is wearing a face shield, you know, everybody else gets three feet and this kid has to be six feet away from everybody, that's not really um fair to that child either. So.
Okay, so what is the difference between homeschool and remote learning? Um homeschool, homeschool registers and reports to the state and remote learning follows our RLS curriculum?
George, I'm not sure if the Zoom room caught that. If you want to touch that real quickly, yeah.
Okay, I'll repeat that. So what is the difference between homeschool and remote learning? Homeschool registers and reports to the state. Remote learning follows our RLRS curriculum and schedule.
And I just want to add as far as parents have questions about homeschool, rather than contact your child's classroom teacher, feel free to contact me and I can point you in the right direction to look at curriculum on the state page and just help you with some resources because teachers are very um can we move classes to different classrooms so they fit better? I kind of answered this first one. We we moved within wings to help, but what we're really trying to do is keep elementary in elementary, middle school, middle school, and high school, and high school. Um we have looked at options. We have shifted some spaces to make the groups work better. But we have looked at all of our spacing options.
So why isn't priority being given to elementary students for in-class instruction? Uh priority is being given to all of our students. Um there is some, you know, chatter out there that, you know, that our elementary students, they need more. And so if it really comes down to it, we should bring them in. Um it still comes down to a staffing issue for us. We don't, even if we were to break kids up into smaller groups in classrooms, we don't have the teachers to teach these kids who have the right endorsements to teach at those grade levels. So that is an issue for us.
I just want to add my perspective from last spring, you know, the high school with remote, you know, some people say, oh, make the high school, middle school go remote. That would put a lot of other kids at risk. Um we had a lot of kids that didn't check in for, you know, a whole quarter. And I'm worried, you know, we need to think about that and get these kids in the classroom too because I'm worried if they continue not to check in, we may lose them. You know, they may decide that they're not going to finish school. So really, like Georgia said, all of our kids need to be here. How can we manage internet challenges? Okay, so this is like a two-part question. For students at homes that don't have internet or bad Wi, like not bad Wi-Fi, but no Wi-Fi, we did provide hotspots, Kajit devices. I think we had everybody had internet. So we can handle that. The thing we can't handle is consolidation. And in town, Ranjly, we had days where we couldn't do remote learning because the internet just didn't work. We can't do anything about that. I think maybe we can call the state and ask them to do something about that, but when the system is full overloaded, I really don't know the right terms, we can't fix that. So we'll have to deal with that. It'll take some understanding and patience and we have to go all remote. It will be a reality that someday a teacher may have all your kids say, I don't have internet. That happened probably three times this year. Um we just have to go with that, so.
There's been some questions around the lack of childcare in town. Um I am currently working with um a couple of ladies from the state um to sort of see how other schools are addressing this issue. We know it's an issue. Um we understand. Um and so I am going to continue to work on that to try to create some additional um aftercare or um some care in town for students, school-aged students. This is going to be an issue if we end up going to, you know, if we're doing the hybrid model, that's going to end up being a real problem for a lot of people in town. And we hear you and 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 I'm working on that. So there's more information to come.
I apologize. I really don't know where to look in here while I'm talking. So like I'm doing some weird movements now. So the last frequently asked question on the sheet is, why are Tuesdays still early dismissal? So teachers use Tuesdays from 1:30 on. That's when we do our professional development. We have staff meetings, we have team meetings. We still have to maintain that because before we didn't have enough time to do the work we have to do and now it's even less. Um so we're maintaining that to give teachers time to do that. Some people say, well, why didn't you do that on Friday? Well, Friday is still a school day. It's remote and the teachers are going to be working with students, recording online lessons as well as teaching. Um so that's why we maintain Tuesday, give us some time to do the work we need to do.
So we anticipate that um with our sprayers, that there are some questions about a chemical that's coming out of the sprayer. So I'm going to have Jeff come up and speak to that. As I said, he took a class, he had to take a class on it today. So he should be an expert in that right now.
Knocked it over. Um the chemical, we're going to do our normal cleaning. Um when we're done, we're gonna um use this chemical. It's vital oxide. It's a sanitizer. Um the state of Maine has uh put us in a little spot. Um the chemical used out of a hand pump sprayer is not required to have a license. You put the same chemical in a mechanical sprayer, the battery operated or hooked up to a outlet and run on a motor requires a pesticide applicator's license. So today I had a few classes on it. Um some schools are sending the mechanical sprayers back. They're not, they're not going to deal with the license. It's uh it's two tests. The custodians would have to take them. Um I have to take the two tests. I would have to be a master applicator licensed, so I'd have to actually take four tests. Um so I haven't decided if we will actually use those mechanical sprayers or we'll just go to um hand sprayers. Um but this product right here kills hepatitis A, B, C. You can see everything in the dark black. Um H1N1, there's a whole bunch of them, some of them I can't pronounce. Um it's, you leave it basically on a surface for 10 minutes. Um it evaporates. Uh the custodians don't have to wear any PPE. Um you can spray it on trays that are used in the cafeteria for food. Um the reason I was looking at the sprayers was to, you know, be uh we would spray like all desks, all chairs, all eye-touch areas, light switches. Um on the buses would spray the seats, spray the handrail. Um so we would do this at the end of the day when people are out of the building. We're not going to spray while the students are staffed, people in classrooms. I don't know if there's any other questions. Yeah, well, no. Okay, I'll leave it at that.
One of the questions was um what involvement do we have um with our clinic? Um and what testing is available to us? Like what happens if we have a case?
That's okay. I can reach. If you can hear me, I don't have to go all the way up there. Um so I've been facing this direction. Um okay, so I am meeting with the new provider at the clinic here um next week uh to go over kind of what our protocol is going to be as far as any of our students that are patients of the clinic. Um as of right now, you really should be going for your primary care physician. So a lot of our students also see their pediatricians in Farmington or Strong, you know, we're kind of spread out. So it will be kind of a case by case basis on who your primary physician is and we will work through that. Um and the testing is going to depend on them. I mean, I can't send, I I can't really send somebody for specific testing. It has to be ordered through your PCP. So we will work with the families on that and then determine. A lot of it is going to depend on the families calling their primary care and finding out if they think they need to have a test. Um so I don't worry. Stand with that. If we are to have like a positive case, it's going to be, we would work with the CDC. Um contact tracing, Emily Polin, who is the school nurse consultant for the state and epidemiologist. So it would really, they would make their recommendations, recommendations to us. And then um Mr. Downing would ultimately make the decision based on recommendations. So.
Okay, so there was one question from a board member about teacher workload um and staffing issues. So I, you know, this is an important concept topic because I don't think many people understand um what this takes. You know, when we're in person, like we were before March 13th, you have kids coming into your room, you're doing a lesson plan for all those kids. And when we're looking at this, there's been many times I've been sitting in my office saying, I think teachers are saying yes to this, but I don't think it's possible. So we go back and look at it. So I just will just kind of give you a rundown of what I know about the grades. So you're going to have elementary teachers when we do this. So we're going to have kids in the building. We could have kids in the building, kids remote, and then families that are going to choose remote. So your teachers will not only be planning for the students in person, they will be recording lessons. They will be monitoring the email. They may be having live meetings where you have some kids in the classroom, you have some kids at home. So you have to manage the Zoom while managing your classroom. Um and then, you know, assessments, it's a huge undertaking. And the job before was hard. We just added a whole level to it. So the workload on teachers has increased and it is a concern. We have to monitor closely, I believe, how we are doing as professionals and if we can maintain. Um at the middle school level, you know, the remote will be synchronous, which means real time. But still, while you're teaching your kids in the class, you have to figure out how to stream from your classroom in a way that provides privacy. You have to monitor questions remotely, monitor questions in classroom. There probably will be some behavior remotely. You'll have to watch like funny screen names, kids shutting off their camera, parents who may be in the background. And then, you know, you're not only collecting work in the classroom, you're getting emails of all the work and then kids send you pictures that are upside down. So then you got to go in and like rotate all the pictures. So at the middle school, it's a lot more work and that's pretty much what the high school will be. And the biggest part is going to be managing in real time, live streaming or streaming from your room. from your room and keeping track of what you're doing in the space. So that is a real concern. I don't know if everyone, you know, our world of teaching is kind of private, you know, not everyone sees what's going on here. But I promise you that the teachers are taking on a, they're basically getting ready to climb Everest, I think, and it's going to be a lot of work. So we'll all have to work together, so.
So before we turn to the school board, questions and comments and other items that they would like to ask the administrators that are here because we're representing our committee. What we are recommending as a draft is to look at the hybrid model that fades in hopefully to the green within, we're trying to think of like a two-week period. And what Seth just said is very important because we don't want to make mistakes that could cause issues down the road. We really don't. And that's not only the educational aspect, safety and those things. So that would be a, the committee's recommendation is to look at the hybrid model first, which was the yellow, and then phase into green if everything stays, as hopefully, I pray to God that it will. I know the numbers are down, but there's a lot that's going into this. And at the same time, we want to make sure that we provide the best education possible for your kids so that once we get into green, we can stay in it. That's, that's what we're looking at. We really looked at what the state was providing for information. I'll speak for myself personally, got extremely frustrated at times because we thought we had something just the way we thought it would work, and then we were basically, had to change from one Tuesday or one Monday to Wednesday or Thursday when we had our next meeting. So this is what we're looking at as our draft. But at the same time, we're listening with an open mind to what people have to say, both from the school board and from the participants in the audience and from the parents. Because we, again, I'm going to repeat it, we want what's best for your kids. They come first. Staff, you know you're important, I told you that. And what we do for our kids, we do for our staff. And eventually, as I said, out into the community because they will be into the community after school and on weekends. So that is our presentation.
Okay, real quick, I just want to say thanks for the huge effort everybody involved in this, obviously put into drafting this thing with multiple changes from the state along the way that forced you to reinvent the wheel. A lot of information to digest. We'll start with the school board. Any questions or comments? Chris? Sure. Actually, yeah, there's another one right here.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of questions I have is, first of all, I can, we can definitely see that a lot of effort put into this by the administration and board, the administration to bring this to us at the board. My question is, is that we've got the cohorts that work, it's Monday, Tuesday, and it's Wednesday, Thursday, and then Friday, everyone remote. If we're really concerned about quarantine and those pieces, why wouldn't we do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, remote? Allow the school to be thoroughly cleaned, top and bottom, plus allow 24 hours before the next group comes in? So if any issues develop with that cohort that can be reported, self-reported from any of those groups before we go with the Thursday, Friday? That would then allow a Saturday thorough cleaning in two days of the weekend in order to cover. This has been brought up. It's not a unique idea. This was discussed, our model is very similar to RSU 9. Some have brought up that same comment. So I can't take credit for the idea, but I think it's a good one because it would allow part of that to, if some issue developed with that first group, the Monday, Tuesday group, you've got one-day buffer to react. Someone comes home not feeling well on Tuesday night or wakes up Wednesday morning, you've got that extra level of protection. If you don't, then you're relying on one night of staff cleaning, even if they start with the early dismissal on Tuesday, it's, it's still, that's a, that's a concern. And from my understanding is, we're not rotating staff, so the staff is here for both cohorts. Is that correct? So that would also allow the administration a 24-hour buffer to decide, okay, do we immediately switch to high? Or do we immediately switch to red because an incident developed with that first group so we can protect the other group so that they could continue learning into the following Do you want to stall it? Do you want to respond to those or do you want to wait for the next question? What have you received for feedback so far from staff members? Because it seems, at least my reading of subliminally through different posts of various staff members on social media and things, that it's kind of all over the book of comfort levels. And I think if we look at ourselves as the board, we're the employer, and we have employees, I think it's important we have a clear level of where our employees are as to how comfortable they feel of the environment that's getting set. I mean, I know it's, can sound a little concerning when Jeff has to go and do four different licenses in order to sanitize the building. It's their exposure issues and those pieces there. And just that entire process, I think it would be really good to have a clear understanding of that, much like some of our other anticipating of issues. I would hate to get into the first week of school and all of a sudden, a third of the staff says, "Whoa, we're not comfortable. We need to back up a little." So I think it's important we get a good, solid read on that. I'm sure you've already made inroads of that with the steering committee, but I'd be interested to see if there's been a full staff pulling or where we are with that in relation to the RTA and the support staff. Thank you.
Those are good questions. The answer to the first question is actually, we actually did have our plan originally set that way to have Wednesday off in the middle of the week. But the other surrounding districts in Franklin County are all going Fridays, and for Foster Tech reasons, we decided to follow their, their schedule. So that's why we had a Friday. You know, we determined Friday is the day. Does that answer your question?
I've seen over the years of being on the board that Foster Tech often ends up drives our process, and I would think for the short-term period, which we're hoping that this is only a few weeks, that we could not let that drive our process and really look hard at the Wednesday thing. I think it really gives us a lot more protection for our students, which to me is our primary goal. And we can work out those six or seven Foster Tech days. The students that still go down or do those pieces, I think, could work. They may be off slightly on their other academic schedule, but I think that that could work being someone who's had students in both of those. We dealt with some of those where there was a snow day or there was a workshop day in relation to that. Didn't happen very often, but we worked around those to work with what SAD9 had. I would just hate to see 200 students turned by the handful of Foster Tech students and where we go with that. And I would think that would be our only conflict with Foster Tech unless I'm, unless things change.
No, we're just, we're just trying to stay in line with the districts, our surrounding districts.
Maybe we can push them all to go to Wednesday as well.
Well, we can look at the logistics around that, Chris, and we can take a look at that more deeply to see if that's, if that's something that we can do. To answer your other question, I really want to stay within confidentiality of my staff. Well, what I will say is that my staff has, or our staff has been pretty open with any concerns that they have, and we've really tried to work to make them feel as comfortable as possible being in the building. One of the things that Chris just spoke to is that this slow phase-in process, I think, is going to help us all if we can just get, keep the numbers low to begin with, we can get low numbers of kids, we can get them feeling comfortable being in this building. Again, because, you know, frankly, probably some of them are, you know, this virus caused them to leave. So, you know, we, we're not really sure how kids are going to come in and come back. So that's a concern for us. Their social and emotional well-being is an issue that we want to be able to sort of ease kids back in. We want to help people socially, get socially back together. So in that phase-in process, we're not only looking at the teachers, I mean, at the students, but also at the staff as well, and really trying to take into consideration their concerns and trying to make them as, as comfortable as they can be in this building. What I can say is that I have not heard from the staff, I have not heard that there's any staff members leaving us. So, not as of yet, so.
First of all, I'd like to thank the administration and teachers for the proposal. I think it's very strong. I think it covers a lot of the issues that many people are concerned about on both sides. I'm very happy with what you guys have done. Having said that, I do have a little bit of a concern about starting in yellow and then going to green. Georgia, you just addressed that question, and I think that's a fair consideration. But I would at least ask that we have a date that we go to green and that we don't get stuck in yellow because we should be in green. And I understand easing people in, getting them comfortable, but sometimes when you start, especially a very complicated process like this, it gets hard to change because you're used to what you started with. So I just want to make sure we don't get stuck in that and then keep pushing off going to green.
That's also a really good question, Paul. So one of the things that's driving us right now to be yellow is that, is the uncertainty of the numbers of kids that we have coming back. We're not sure how many kids we have coming back. And at a six-foot distance, we can only have so many kids in certain spaces. Our classrooms are different sizes, so in some classrooms, we can only have nine students. In other classes, we could have 11, in some classes, we can have 12. But the numbers are what's driving us to go in as yellow right now. We are also seeing a huge, a very huge insurgence of enrollments happening we've never seen before. So we're not sure at this point how many of our students are going to go remote. We're not sure how many of them are going to decide to homeschool and how many of them, you know, we do have some numbers. I have been, you know, surveying parents, but not really sure where parents, you know, who are saying no, what option they're looking at, whether remote or homeschooling. So until we have some real certainty there, many of our classrooms are over capacity. So that's kind of where we're at. To answer your question about when will we go green, we won't really be able to go green in, in the capacity that you're thinking until the state sort of, you know, lessens the restrictions on us to be able to do that. We are going to look at trying to get as many numbers as we can. Maybe after the first, we're going to look every, you know, we're going to review our plan on an ongoing basis. This is going to be fluid. So if after two weeks, we say, you know, maybe some classrooms can have all of their kids in the classrooms because we know how many numbers are, are there, we're going to try to get as many kids in as we can. But, you know, the numbers are what drive it for us right now. So we're not trying to, what, what I really want to be clear about is that if after two weeks, we say, "The high school can come back because we can make the numbers work," we're not making high school a priority. It's just that their numbers are working, we can make it happen for them. But that six feet, that six-foot distancing right now is really what drives, is driving this decision.
Any other board comments or questions?
Just one quick thing, as I was reading through the agenda at the end is the mission. And I think if you take a minute to read that mission, it kind of brings us all back together to where we hoped we would be without any idea that we are going to have to go through this. That mission still holds true and really reminds us what and why we're all here.
Okay, so any more board questions, comments? Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
I agree with Paul. I think it's set for a green nation to set because we need to move. We have two or three of the two stores, and then we do a lot, whether that means you set a 30,000, 40,000, 20,000, or that one. So with that ready, we have a total of 17,000, and then the size of the food that you picked up to.
So for the people on Zoom, Chris was not on the microphone. He's saying he would like to see a date to move to green. I, I feel like Georgia just answered that question. You could set an arbitrary date, but if you have too many kids for the classroom, the date means nothing. So, go ahead, Georgia, you can, you can answer.
Yeah, I think, I think an additional piece of information here that I should have mentioned just a second ago, too, is in this planning process, we have really looked at our town and the, and the makeup of our town. And our town is a tourist community. And as you all know, we have a lot of tourists in town right now, and thank goodness for that. I'm so happy that all the businesses are doing well and thriving, and that's great. But what I think we would really feel comfortable, more comfortable with is getting on the other side of Labor Day weekend and more towards the end of September before we really look at making any changes to make sure that we're still on the right side of this thing, still on the right side of this thing. I think that would be really important to give ourselves a little bit of time.
And with that, one of the questions we've been asked the board as well, we look at the vote on next Wednesday, is moving the starting date to September 8th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day, which would give us the entire week, would give the staff the entire week to prepare and have, actually even have some staff be students on a dry run through our schedule. You'll notice around the state that many school systems are going to September 8th.
You'll notice around the state that many school systems are going to September 8 for that reason, because of all the changes that keep coming out of as educators that we want to make sure that we can address. So that would be on the plan that we submit as well for the starting date of September 8. And ironically, Foster Tech, when you go to a tech center, you can only have five dissimilar days in your schedule for all the school districts to go to that CTE. And last week, they were planning on starting on 31st and didn't think that they would change to the 8th. Well, they have changed to the 8th. So we now will not have any dissimilar days with Foster Tech, which keeps us on the state calendar. Those are some things that are happening that quickly. August 31st starting date, now it's pushed back to September 8.
Any other board questions, comments? Okay, let's turn it over to public comments. Just ask when you come up, please come up to the microphone up here so everybody listening on Zoom at home can hear the question. Come on up.
So it goes back to like what Paul said and what you said about, we don't know how many kids are going to be, you don't know how many kids are going to be in the classroom yet. So why haven't you asked parents if their kids are going to school yet or not? Or how they feel about it? How is that sort of question?
Okay. So to answer your question, we have asked parents. We've heard back from many parents that they've made a decision, but there are many parents that haven't made a decision yet based on wanting to know what our plan is and the uncertainty of what's to come. So parents just haven't made a decision and they're not comfortable making a decision yet, so.
Okay, and then I have another question on the day the kids aren't in school. Are you going to actually be doing more Zoom? Because last year, that was like a big problem with learning is not doing Zoom on a daily basis when they were not in school.
Yeah, the remote learning is going to look much different. In the spring, we basically had to create that for 48 hours. You know, we did the best. And what we've looked at is a lot more contact time, virtual contact time at all levels. So it will be different at all levels. And if you read the guidelines, even at the, at the elementary level is a requirement that we progress through curriculum. So it will be a much different experience.
There's a lot of Zoom questions.
All right, so. Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Hold on, I gotta scroll up to them. The first one was whether siblings could sit together on the bus. So we didn't specifically address that.
Originally, the answer was yes. Subsequently, the answer was no, one per seat. And was waiting for them to come back to tell us that they can sit together again. We planned to have siblings together, and then again, we were told one per seat. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Maine Department of Education's Transportation is reevaluating that as we speak because the concern is the number that we can get on the bus. That, you know, besides the social distancing, another aspect that we're looking at is how many kids would need the bus, which we've asked. And we have an idea, but we're going to follow up with that once we know where our plan is. And then we will look at that. But I wish I could say the answer is yes, but it has not been changing. We're affectionately calling it the SAT seating arrangement. You know, when you get tired of taking the SAT, you just mark things to make a design. So we're going window, aisle, window, aisle, window, aisle. Of course, aisle would move in some. It doesn't need the six foot, but it's as close as we can get. The other question is that we, that we as superintendents have asked the Department of God's Transportation is about the hand sanitizer, bus aids. How is the state going to help us with that? Because we're now told that we cannot use a hand sanitizer that we had planned to use on the bus. It has to be used outside the bus because it has a percent of alcohol in it. And that is a violation of the Federal Transportation Act. Blameable, so. Right now, it's, think of SAT coming down the bus, which gives us, I believe, 24? 24.
Okay, this one's been spoken to quite a bit, but I'll just read it anyway. How could we get to green in two weeks if the class sizes don't fit with the required six feet? It could be very confusing and potentially misrepresenting what might happen. But I think that we've spoken to that.
It's all based on square footage and what's allowable in each classroom.
Can we utilize outdoor classrooms for lunch? Or at all?
So that is a good question. That's a question that's been asked before. With serving lunch, there are a lot of sanitary issues that come into play. And just having children just go outside to eat is not as simple as it sounds. It's just not, getting the food out there. We're going to have to sanitize trays before they even go back upstairs. So they're going to have to go like in the solution. It's just, it's just too complicated to try to wrap our heads around that. It is a really good question, but it's just not something that's, that's going to be easily able to be done.
Let's take one question from someone we have here, real quick.
If you reduce the square footage, excuse me, the distancing to three feet, would you be able to accommodate all the students?
So as we, as we mentioned, if we were to go three feet, that presents all kinds of issues for us. If we're feeding kids in classrooms, we, we won't be able to meet that requirement. They have to be six feet apart when eating, and they have to be six feet apart when we're giving them a mask break. And as Lindsay spoke to a little while ago, if we get into a situation where we have an outbreak or we have a case, it becomes much more complicated for us if our students have been seated three feet apart. The quarantining level, the number of people that would be affected by that is going to be greatly increased. I can't, I would say for some classrooms, yes, but not all classrooms.
Georgia, is it a, is it a separate square foot, student per square foot? Or is it, do they actually break it down to three feet versus 60? You know, there are two separate requirements, I guess is the question.
They actually break it down as well. You can have, you know, it's hard to do the three feet in a classroom, but you also have to be able to accommodate six feet if you're feeding. So for us, we have to go with six feet, but we can't. We just wouldn't be able to feed them like Jeff said. We have to slip them off somehow.
That's also part of the reason why we're looking at the phase in is that if we find that things are looking good, that if we did go down to three feet, how that would look instead of just trying to write from the beginning. Because at the beginning, up until basically, I think it was right before July 17, it was six feet. And then the American Pediatric Association, I think that's, they were the first to talk about the three foot. It wasn't the Maine CDC and it wasn't the Maine DOE. It came from a national. And Maine has pretty much stayed with the six feet until that came out. And then what a lot of school systems did and what we're looking at is only having desks in the room and going from the center of one desk to the center of another desk, maintaining that three-foot gap and how that would fit. And we picked up in some rooms a couple of spaces and others it was minimal. It's just the way the class is set up. So that's why we stayed with the six foot for now. Looking at the phase in, we'll see how the numbers work.
Okay. Are there specific classes or grades which have low student count to allow for full onsite while still allowing the six-foot distance?
I can't answer that question with any certainty right now, but I would say that that, that, that is a possibility.
And I think some of that, people are thinking at the high school level because, you know, your classes are all different sizes. But then you'd be splitting hairs down to, okay, you know, precalculus can come in, but Algebra I has to be split. It's just, it's a beast to plan. So, you know, at the high school level, sometimes it may seem like that, but it doesn't work for everybody.
With the outdoor classrooms, can tents be utilized?
That's a really good question. We are looking into getting some additional outdoor classroom space for kids to be able to go out and enjoy some fresh air, be six feet apart and not have to wear a mask. So when they're outside, if they can maintain six-foot distancing, they will not be required to wear a mask. So that's why we're doing, we're putting those out there to give all of the classrooms time to sort of go out and, and take a breath and enjoy some outdoor space. Potentially specials could happen out there. So yes, we are looking to that.
When do you propose to get firm parent feedback to get more certainty on the numbers? Can this be sooner rather than later?
So we're asking that we hear from all families by August 26. That's the deadline.
If there is no pre-K, does that mean that the teacher and ed tech are going to be on furlough?
That's a good question. No, the teacher and the ed tech are not going to be on furlough. They're actually going to be in-house servicing remote learners and support classrooms. As we said, one of the reasons we made that decision, decision is that we're going to need additional staffing. We are going to need staffing to go into classrooms while kids eat their lunches. We're going to need additional staffing for kids while they go out for recess. We're going to, we anticipate that there's probably going to be a great need for intervention at a pretty intense level to start, and we're going to need teachers to help with that. And I think the remote learning piece, as we had spoken to, as Chris mentioned a little while ago, we are going to need some additional staff to help and be, be available during the course of the school day to support families. So that will be just some of the ways they'll be utilized.
There is a follow-up question to that. Will they be paid accordingly if the teacher is not teaching pre-K? Will she be paid as support staff?
The staff, the teaching staff, the teacher and the ed tech are going to be paid with grant money during this time. Through the end of December, we have grant money. So that's how that these two staff people will be paid for. There's, there's COVID money coming in. And because these teachers are teaching in that realm, that's how they'll be paid. That's the funding stream that they'll be paid from, not out of the regular budget.
Can you speak more to the ventilation? Can you speak to the ventilation a little bit more?
Currently, right now, every room has air intake and outtake. The teacher's lounge just got set up Monday and Seth's new office was done. So everything, everything's working in our air ventilation. We have, Univents have air coming in. That's in the older classrooms where the heat comes in. And in the high school, the newer classrooms have them in the ceiling. You can see ones for heat and ones for air exchange. All, all the, all the motors are running and we're, we're all set on that.
Jeff, a question probably, they all meet the standard set by the state, correct?
One second, looks like maybe there were some audio issues in the Zoom. Let me just, okay, they can hear us. Will student drivers park in the parking lot but then walk around to the bus loop? Or will they enter through the main entrance?
Currently, we're going to ask the students to park in the parking lot. They're going to walk across the parking lot, get the sidewalk by the high school doors. And right now, are going to go around the building on the sidewalk to the high school entrance. We just are trying to really limit the number of entrances, but they will not go through the main entrance.
I think that's, um, one question was, I believe mask breaks are no longer allowed active today. Is that correct?
Is this one still on? Yes, okay. So the language around mask, mask breaks has been removed. And partly, it is because nobody wanted to give a firm answer on how long a mask break should be. So it really will be, the culture, what they want us to do is try to just make it the norm, that the more mask breaks you take, the more kids and staff are going to want to take, to take them off or going to take them. If we create a culture where they, it is part of the norm and is part of every day, then, then we won't need to do those as frequently. However, with that being said, it's kind of at the teacher's discretion if they want to designate an area in their classroom, if they have room where the student can go and not be at their desk if they want to, or if they can allow them to just take their mask down a minute or two and put it back up or take a drink of water, whatever that situation may be. So they took that language out primarily because they didn't want to designate a specific time related to that.
One second, I'm going to have Seth address a question.
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Okay, the CDC, which is what I see people are listening to, states that antibody testing and the virus testing both state that children are not the primary drivers of COVID, that the death rate is less than the flu. They also state in person is the best interest of students for so many reasons. Maine actually says three feet is acceptable between students combined with other safety measures. Six feet is required without masks for eating. So a couple of questions. Can school three feet in class to accommodate all students? And use the gym and cafeteria for six-foot distancing mask breaks or outside? Okay, I'll start there. So the cafeteria is being used for instructional site space, so we can't use that for eating. Georgia can fill them, but the gymnasium, we are keeping for our movement area. We need a space for kids to be able to move, to have PE. So this is an instructional space. And the outside thing, and just to back to the tents today, with Range Lake Heritage Trust is letting us use one of their tents. So that's really nice. But we, you know, that's weather. We're in Rangeley. It can snow in September, so we're going to do that the best we can. It can snow in September, so we're going to do that the best we can. School is saying six feet is necessary without a mask, and why do students have to wear masks in the classroom? If school is saying six feet is necessary without a mask, and why do students have to wear masks in classroom? Masks are mandatory, the only time you can take them off is during a mask break, but now there's new which have to be six feet apart, and even to take a drink of water, you can't remove your mask to take a drink of water unless you're a six feet apart.
The mask is also mandatory from Governor Mills. She made that in her address a couple weeks ago, saying that students going into schools will be required to wear a mask at all times, staff, students, anybody entering the building at all times unless eating or drinking. So that's not, I mean, we can't, yes, she's the governor, we have to go by what she says as well as what, even though the CDC is saying otherwise. We have no cases in town, even with the influx of out of town people that we currently have. Please don't use this as an excuse. This person feels that it's a disservice to our students.
I understand that and I, and you know, first of all, I I understand how hard this is for everybody. But we have to follow the framework that's been put in front of us. We cannot veer from that as a public institution, we have to stay within that. So our hands are tied at this point.
And I apologize, I guess we should have had people asking questions on Zoom identify themselves. But, sorry. I think that's the end of the questions on Zoom, unless anyone wants to take anything in quickly.
Anybody else that's present here have any questions? Okay, so that ends the public comments, we're going to move it on to item eight, Jeff, discussion about Maine Principals Association.
So right now, they're still making plans to play soccer. The MPA has reduced the season from 14 games to 10 maximum. First game's not played until September 18th to help schools do these plans. If we have a tournament, it's going to be an open tournament, so they're not going to collect field points to take the pressure off teams trying to schedule against certain teams. There's no minimum games to play, there usually is nine. So I was on an athletic director's meeting for the Southwest Conference and I said, how, how are we going to do this? Here we are making plans for social distancing and one student per seat. And then we're going to go play soccer, which will not be played social distance. We're going to play Richmond, who plays at North Yarmouth Academy on Tuesday. And so, you know, nothing has been decided yet. The MPA may come in and say, we're not going to do sports. You're starting to see some colleges stop playing sports. So what I'd just like to discuss is, in the event we are going to play soccer, do we, do we want to play soccer?
Anybody here is willing to chime in with their opinion on it?
I think part of the challenge you're going to have to figure out is, I don't know if anyone saw the article on Foxcroft Academy today, but they started preseason. They had two, two of their preseason athletes tested positive, which they're trying to figure out how to deal with that on the whole school level. I think there's a lot of activity that's been outlined in this plan, that you know, we can't go to three feet versus six feet because of these pieces. So are we setting ourselves up for a bigger risk that prevents us from dropping to the three foot plan by having those sports? I, I understand that. That that can be disappointing, especially to the student athletes. We watched our theater and art people lose their whole summer of events that they do, of events because of what's happening here for the greater good to try to be on the other side of it. So I think, in my opinion is, I think the jury's still out on that. Be interested to see if any other school districts have the same problems as Foxcroft has had in those pieces. And I mean, you've got Pine Tree, which is in Falmouth, you've got Greater Christian is down there. But I think this is where we've got to kind of figure out, we've done a lot in this community to keep our bubble there. And I would, if you came to me and said, you know, for lack of a better phrase, Sophie's Choice, you better, you want to get the school to green? Or you want to have sports stay in yellow or possibly have to go to red? I would rather move in the direction, we have the school in green and give up on the athletic season in order to achieve that. But that's, that's my personal thing.
Now, this is not, obviously speaking for the board, this is just my opinion, but this whole endeavor is a risk versus reward exercise. There is a certain amount of risk we should be willing to take to go to school because there are bad things that can happen when kids are not in school. And I believe full-heartedly in team sports and the importance of them. But if we're jumping through all these hoops here to make things as safe as they can possibly be, and then we're going to go play a sport where that stuff is relatively thrown out the window, that risk doesn't meet that criteria in my eyes.
I did say this to Jeff the other day, and for those of you who don't know, I am very actively involved in, with the athletes and the athletics as well. So you know, it would, it would break my heart not to be with these kids in that capacity. However, I think it's the, I want to echo the same thing in my medical professional opinion that if we are indeed so worried about putting all these measures into place for our kids to come to school, that that needs to be our priority. And I know that kids are missing out, but like Chris said, you know, it's not just athletics that they're going to have to miss out on. You know, it's theater, it's field trips, it's everything else. And I think another thing that we just have to think about is that, you know, if some parents are making the choice for their kids to come to school, knowing these safety measures are in place. And if they know that there are kids going and traveling outside and, and having that exposure, they're not really, they don't have a say in that. So I think it's just important that we, you know, make that decision based on what is best for everybody, so.
Chris, is there anything we need to, to do for this right now?
No action needs to be taken this time. I think Jeff was, you know, throwing out a question. I, I will speak as superintendent, but I'll also speak after coaching for 38 years in various sports. And it surprises me at this point that a number of school districts, including potentially ours that might start out in yellow, would be asking kids to go to practice five days a week and participating against teams that we do not know what they're doing at their school. And it just concerns me that, you know, it's sort of like we develop a bubble that we feel comfortable with in Ranger School that we'll, you know, end up playing somebody that did not follow the rules of the safety. So no actions taken, but I wanted to make sure that folks knew where the superintendent was coming from. The MPA is really, needs to make a decision because they keep moving back the phases of practices and they still have not allowed the specific teams to practice. It's still a general, and they keep moving the season back, eventually, you know, you won't be able to have one, so. No action needed.
Okay, thanks, we'll go on to the committee reports. First one, policy, Kathy?
All right, well, we met on August 5th and we worked on a lot of policies that the state has asked us to revise and that we've been working on, the tech committee has been working on. And also we're trying to make the policies all have the same coding, to go along with the MSA coding, it's getting very complicated, but we're getting there. Time, I guess we'll make, we'll work on.
Okay, finance committee met today, went over a few things. One of the things Sheila sent this out to everyone last month, I think, a few weeks ago, funds transfer. This spring, when school shut down, Jeff got a bunch of stuff done at the school that was much easier to do without people in the building. Paying the gym, redoing the dugout floor, repair on an oil furnace, things like that. Put, put it over budget, about $4700. There is a motion later on to transfer that from the school or contingency fund, we'll talk about that later on. But that's the reason that it went over is just there was stuff that was easier to get done while people weren't in the building, so he made it happen. We talked about the lunch program, price increases. 10 cents increase for K to 8 and 15 cents for 9 to 12. That's the amount that we have to move forward each year in order to get to the actual cost of the meal, which is $5.85 right now. We talked about, you have a handout here for substitute wages. Couple of things there, it has to be revisited every year to look at the wages that are offered to substitute teachers. Substitutes are getting harder to find. When you call them, it's getting harder to get a yes answer for them to come in. So there's a combination of things going on here. One is trying to make a little greater incentive for subs to actually come in. And the other one is, as of January 1st, the minimum wage is going up to $13 an hour. So combine those two things, that's where these increases are, are coming from. And you'll see that the what Sheila has broken down there is how much the increase was from last year to this year for the subs, but also for the ed techs. And I'm not going to go into all the details, it's all on the page right there. And then the last thing is kind of a big one and has to do with unemployment. And it's a huge cost right now that was unexpected. The reason for that is, in the past, schools used the system of direct reimbursement for unemployment and there was very rarely anybody that was claiming unemployment. So it didn't cost us all that much money. Now, there are a bunch of people that are claiming unemployment. What happens is if somebody resigns from the school, goes and gets a job somewhere else, subsequently loses that job, they can still look back a year and a half and make a claim against a school for unemployment, or the school has to pay some of that. So that's what we're seeing and the costs are skyrocketing. The state has another program that uses a taxation basis for it. This is what most schools have already moved to and it's what we are leaning towards moving to as well. This one, you pay a fixed amount per your salary that you pay the entire school. The way I look at it, and the best way I can explain it in my caveman understanding of it, is that you're essentially paying an insurance policy premium so that if somebody does go on unemployment, your costs don't increase. You're paying a fixed amount every year for that, for that unemployment, no matter how many people would end up on it. So it would be cost saving, especially for what we're going through right now. And that's everything we talked.
Is just a couple other points that you may have heard about or read about some funding that the state has provided to school district. There's actually three categories, two involve actual funding, one does not. What's called personal protection equipment. The state has provided by student count, a number of protective pieces of equipment that does not cost the district any money, the state is picking up. The amount, we're still waiting to see those, but it's face masks, it's face shields, disinfectant, some gowns. Another one is called cash funding, that was done very early on this late school year, first of the summer. That was based on title grants. The district received $47,000 plus that runs through December of 2022. So Sheila and Georgia administration is looking at how that would be used. That could be used for a variety of, related to COVID-19. And the other one is called the Corona, I just called it CRF, it's a relief fund based on the coronavirus. That was again based on student count. Only this one did involve a financial amount to the district that amounted to $152,000. We are looking to develop that, it has to end by August 30th. That could be used for anything that is beyond the regular budget. That's, is an expense due to the coronavirus. And administration and staff are looking at some expenses that would fall into that. The key here is that has to be spent by December 30th of this year. And then, right now, there's speculation that there'll be another one starting January. But we'll wait and see on that. So if there's items that are beyond the budget, that's related to coronavirus, there is money that the state is providing to the districts. And that's from the federal. It came from the federal to the state and now it's been released to the district.
All right, do you need the facility?
Just a few things actually have been mentioned. The building is almost all clean, waxing the floors. One thing hasn't been mentioned, the buses have been repainted, rust removed. And they're being inspected right now, so they'll be ready for school. Obviously, the gym has been painted, that was quite a process. And it was mentioned in the finance report. There were concrete slabs poured when the renovation project was here, extra concrete. And so those slabs, they moved the buildings, the dugout buildings onto them and then painted them. So that will look good. Air exchange systems were mentioned and they've been, I guess it's all cleaned. And they are all new, I think we had all of them replaced when we did the renovation project. So they should be working well. And there are a few new air exchange in the teacher's room and in the in the office for the assistant principal. That office is coming along. That office is coming along. Two other things, one is the water stations, drinking fountains. Some drinking fountains have water stations, but all the fountains will be closed so kids can fill their water bottles, but they can't drink at them. And all of the drinking fountains now will have water stations. And there are some new water stations too. Right now, we have a, two new storage units coming and they will hold the furniture and other items that have been removed from the classrooms so that we can meet the social distancing. And we do have smaller classrooms that were created under the renovation project so that, not smaller classrooms, but smaller meeting rooms. We have a number of them that can be utilized for very small groups. So that's our report. They've been very busy and I think the school looks great. Thank you.
All right, let's see, the committee reports, team leader reports.
Yeah, the, first off, the steering committee, that was a team that worked amazing this summer. They've done a lot of work. And at the individual team levels, they're really just diving into how to make our plan work in the classroom. The elementary team met today, I just stopped in briefly. Sometimes they show up and derail it, but they worked hard. I heard positive things. You know, the teams are really taking this on and diving in and saying, how can we make this work? Because like I said, you know, once you think you're answered one question, five more show up. They're tackling those, working on scheduling. I believe the elementary calculated today how long with the bathrooms it would take to wash all the hands before lunch. They have it planned out. Middle school team met, they're doing the same thing. And it's great when they meet because they generate a bunch of questions that we can answer as admin. And the high school team has had a little restructuring because I've moved from team leader and I believe they'll probably be, I'm going to email them tomorrow with some information, they'll probably start diving into this because we have some scheduled stuff started and you'll be able to work. So it's going to be a lot of work this month at the team levels to make our plan work.
All right, thanks Seth. Appointments, resignations, and nominations.
I do, I am happy to make some nominations to the board for your approval. The first position is Jamie Must for the K through 12 PE or physical education position. The second, you know, I'm going to regret this name, Shirley Schrader, part-time, gifted and talented at tech. And the last, certainly not the least, is Abby Thompson as the digital media specialist slash data administrator. Those are my recommendations for nomination.
All right, we start with the K-12 PE. Anybody have a motion to approve the nomination of Jamie Must for that position? Kathy, second? All right, thanks. Any comments? All right, all in favor of hiring Jamie Must as the K-12 PE teacher? Eight, nine, and any opposed? None? Okay. Jamie Must is the new K-12 PE instructor. Shirley Schrader, gifted, talented, and ed tech. Is that correct, Chris? Motion to approve Shirley Schrader's part-time, gifted, and talented in ed tech. Chris, second? Claire, thanks. Any comments? All in favor? Unanimous? And Abby Thompson, digital media specialist. And what was the rest of that title?
School librarian.
Yeah, administrator. All right, Chris, second? Got a bunch of them. Karen, comments? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, congratulations, Abby.
Thank you.
Okay, action items. Chris is going to take this one, the orientation of the school board for 2020-21.
That will be for three new board members, one I know is a veteran returning. Main school management will be sending along information. Usually you can arrange that main school management come up and give an orientation for new board members as well as the veterans that are returning. But I will tell you right now, main school management is pretty busy. They are involved both with the legislature and also with the government and the commissioner. So I will speak to Mr. Bailey to get those, there's a book now that they send out, I'll get those for the new board members.
Okay, 11.2 went away, we already did that one. 11.3, new committee assignments for the new members of the board or returning members. Finance committee, policy committee, and the building or facility committee. Finance mainly dealing with the budget, obviously, policy revision, rescinding of policies or addition of them. And then building facility deals with obviously maintenance of the, of the school building itself. Anybody have any druthers for where they'd like to be on one of those committees? Karen, just, Karen, finance? How about policy? Anybody want that? Okay. 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 And Chris, how about you? All right, does anybody else that's on, any of these committees currently want to switch it up? Everybody else? Okay. All right, sounds good. Future board meeting? This is the, is this the August 19th or?
Our board meetings are on the second Thursday of each month. And our finance committee meets at 5:00 on the board meeting day at night. Just want to make sure that's like a standing date. Committees themselves establish those, but second Thursday of each month.
Okay. 11.5, consideration of the following amendments to the 2019-2020 adopted budget as permitted in the main education and school statutes, Title 28, Section 1485. Section four that permits the transfer funds to not exceed 5% of the total appropriation. The motion is to transfer $4,700 from the school board contingency fund in Article Six, Assistant Administration, to facilities maintenance, repairs, and maintenance. And that's for what I talked about, that the finance committee talked about today. Do I have a motion? We got Chris, second? Second, Karen, all in favor? That's unanimous. Motion passes? Yep. That's on, that's 11-9 there, we're going to do motion for that. Okay, 11.6, school lunch prices for 2020 and 2021. Got a handout there? With the breakdown, like I said, it's K to 8, it's a 10 cent increase and 9 to 12 was a 15 cent increase. So you get a motion to approve the school lunch prices for 2020-2021. Chris, second? Claire, all in favor? Chris, unanimous, it passes. 11.7, motion for adjustments to the 2020-2021 school calendar. Georgia or Seth, you want to talk about that?
Sure. So as Chris explained a little while back, we want to push the start of the school back to September 8th to give staff some additional time to prepare for student arrival that first day. Initially, we had the 17th and the 18th of September as workshop days. Staff agreed at the end of last year, we had two looming workshop days. They agreed to put those in the calendar this year to work. And we are moving those, one of those, to the 8th of October, which would give staff the 8th and the 9th of October to review any data that they have collected, testing data, and to individualize education plans for students for differentiation purposes. And then the other workshop day, we'd like to move to the 4th of January, which would be, it would actually extend the Christmas break one more day, but it would give teachers a chance when they come back from break to, it would give them a data plan for students coming back in.
Okay, I get a motion to approve adjustments to the 2020-2021 school calendar. Jenny, second? Claire, all right, comments, questions? None? All in favor? That is unanimous. The adjustments to the 2020-21 school calendar pass. 11.8, motion for adjustments to the 2020-21 school handbook. Who wants to speak to that?
Sure. We just made some minor edits to the handbook this year. We've been pretty busy. Handbook was really gone over last school year, so it's in pretty good shape.
What's that?
There were some procedure changes to page 12, the second paragraph. We added categories of what constitutes an excused absence. That language was missing. Let's see, we also put in, we added the categories of what constitutes an excused tardy. That language is also missing. Page 17, physical restraint, seclusion, sentence referencing policies, deleted policy JKG as that policy was rescinded and added JKAA and JKAA-R as those are two policies that deal with this topic. Page 20, health and safety searches of student lockers, sentence referencing policies, we deleted JFGA as that policy was rescinded and replaced with JIH as that is the policy that deals with this topic. Page 31, building access, changed to number one to read, the main building and the office open at 7:30, students may not enter the building before 7:45. So that was new language put in. Page 34, updated food service program meal prices. Page 36, in reference to homework, the first paragraph on page, last sentence deleted, see policy JEAA as that policy was rescinded. Page 37, parent drop-off pickup of students. This entire section was revised to reflect new changes brought about COVID-19. And page 38, physical examination of students, deleted, see policy JLCA as that policy was rescinded.
Okay, all in favor of the motion for adjustments to the 2020-2021 school handbook? That's unanimous and passes. Motion for special school board meeting on August 19th, 2020. Chris, do you want to talk a little bit?
That will have one agenda item on that and that will be the opening of school for Ranger Lee based upon the plan that will be presented as a formal request, not a draft, taken into consideration comments, questions, and concerns that were expressed tonight. We're asking for that at 6:30 and that will be the one and only agenda item.
Just confirmed at 6:30, not 6? Yeah, 6:00. All right, motion for special school board meeting on August 19th, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. Claire, second? Kathy, comments? All in favor? Unanimous, passes. I'm concerned with the rest of these policy motions that we burn through these quickly without going into detail because everybody's getting burned out here. I spoke to Kathy quickly on the side, there's nothing, it's time critical there, so we're going to push those. Is there anything on there, Seth? Okay, I thought you were, there's nothing time critical on there, so we will, what's up, Chris? Second? Kathy will second, all in favor? That is unanimous. We will table 1110, 11, 1112, and 1113 for the next regular board meeting, not the August 19th. I don't think any of us, do you talk about the policy revisions? Yeah, before the next board meeting, can we just get those emailed? Okay, we'll get, we'll get you copies of those before the next meeting. All right, item 12, the executive session. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. 1114 was a motion to adopt the new substitute teacher salaries. That handout is in here somewhere, everybody should have it. You can't find it in front of you right now. Here we go. So there is a separate breakdown for teachers and support staff, cook, secretaries, custodians, butts, drivers, ed techs. I talked a little bit about this. The raises bring things in line with what's going to be minimum wage come January 1st and also, look, Chris, I want to just speak to the rest of this stuff here.
We're finding that it's difficult to get substitutes before COVID-19 and now it's going to be even more difficult. So we're, and every year, board has to approve the substitute scale. So the highlighted ones are what they currently are at and the ones before it are what we're recommending. And we're hoping that this will be an incentive to get folks to come into sub in various positions. I will tell you that this is a big problem around the state prior to COVID-19 and as superintendents and administrators, we anticipate an even larger problem. These are the figures that Sheila worked up, provided to the administration and comes with our recommendation to approve them. That's up to the board.
All right, motion to approve the RSU 78 substitute wages proposed for school year 2020 to 21. Claire, second? Jessica, any questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, passes. Okay, 12. Yeah. So we have a motion for an executive session to discuss labor contract negotiations. So first I'll need a motion to approve moving to executive session. Kathy, second? Thank you. We will, after unfortunate, go ahead, Seth. Thank you, we will, after unfortunate, go ahead, Seth. Okay, so for executive session, we will move out and go where Seth tells us to go. At 8:25.
I'm so jealous of the, just because I'm jealous of my mom.
Good, I needed that.
Yeah.
Karen, the Zoom room says to tell Karen we love you. The Zoom room says they love you.
Great, to all teachers.
Yes.
All right, call the meeting back to order at 8:49.
It is recording. Lucy says she loves you too.
And then there's me, up in the corner.
All right, call the meeting back to order at 8:49. The, I'll need an amendment to the agenda for the 19th. There will be another executive session so that we can have a finalized written document that can be presented to the board for that. Once we have the finalized document, we'll bring that to the executive session again next Tuesday, so, Thursday, Wednesday. So I would just need a friendly amendment in order to put that on the agenda.
I would like to.
It's on.
Okay, I would like to add that we add an executive session for labor contract negotiation, one MRFA, section 40516. We added to the meeting next, next office date, 90.
All right, all in favor of the amendment to the August 19th, 2020 agenda? That looks like it is unanimous, motion passes. And finally, motion to adjourn at 8:51 PM. Kathy, second. Vinnie, all in favor? All right, thanks for the marathon session, thanks everybody for coming out.
Yeah, I was just gonna copy the chat.
It should all be, um, so everything should be saved in the cloud, so if you.
Even the chat?
What, yeah, once you, once you leave the meeting, it will load the recording and the chat. I think, and then say, but if you have a way to save the chat.
I'm just copying, just in case. I wasn't sure if like my private chats get saved. Can I hit stop recording now? I can hit stop recording, right?